Okay, everyone, it's seven o'clock. Our first regular meeting of May. I welcome everybody here tonight. Obviously, we're doing some promotions and swearing ins. Got a little bit of business that we'll have to conduct tonight. Commissioner Laig is not with us, he's at home. He sends his greetings and he wished he could be with us, but his better choice is for him to be at home tonight. So, that's why, you know, see, he's not here, but that's the reason why. So, let's go. We'll call it the order. Your party please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Everybody, clap your hands. Oh heavenly Father, when we come to you this evening, it's holy as we know it. We ask that you continue to guide us, continue to lead us, and continue to show us your way. We ask this evening that you give us the right thoughts to think and the right words to say as we conduct the business for Town Hope Mills. In your name I hope to pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, et veritatis justus.
Please proceed. Thank you, James. I'm ready for words.
My goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and I guess I'm welcome again tomorrow.
Ah, yeah. We will have the agenda. Any additions or additions?
Sir.
Motion. The second on paper. Okay, unanimous? Or she carries official comments now or a manager's report?
All right, Mayor, uh, thank you and welcome officially, uh, to the citizens and the Board of Commissioners. Um, if you look at the manager's report, the community corner has expanded to two pages. Um, there's two things that we have on the agenda. Uh, one, this, uh, Thursday, um, the eighth at six P M. It's our second, Let's Talk It Out. Um, we will be talking about our parks, our recreation programs, and our infrastructure needs of Hope Mills. The meeting will begin at six P M. at the Hope Mills Rec Center next door. Uh, we're asking, this is a town hall style meeting, we're asking any of our citizens to come out. Um, let your voices be heard. Uh, we also have on May twentieth, um, at six P M. at the Public Safety Center, the first of its kind, our Town Hope Mills State of the Town. Um, what you will hear is an update on the status of the town and our future plans. Um, also in the community corner, you got the Ed Heron Park Cookout set for May seventeenth. Um, the Independence Senior Luncheon Cookout is set for July second. Second page of the actual manager's report talks about the Police Foundation Ball on the seventeenth of May. Um, we still are running our Hope Mills Community Engagement Survey. I think that's open to the sixteenth of this month. Um, torch run with the police, bike rodeo on the tenth of May. Uh, we have our first Responders Appreciation Day set for Saturday, May the tenth, from twelve to four. So, there's a lot of community events coming up. Uh, third page is our spring and summer events. Um, there's something new at the lake, uh, self-serve kayak rentals at Hope Mills Lake. Um, that's something new that Parks and Rec is trying out. Um, it's almost like a kiosk where you just come up, pay your money, and the actual kayak gets made available to you. Uh, our Independence Day registration is now open. It'll be open until twentieth. Uh, definitely want to commend Parks and Rec for trucks and stuff this past Saturday. Um, Chamber of Commerce is, uh, in the manager's report, the golf, uh, the, uh, golf tournament set for May twenty-second. Uh, shotgun start is at one, but your sponsorship levels, uh, are in, um, this advertising as well. And you have your, uh, construction and C B O T construction updates. I'd also like to take this time to update the community on the town budget presentation timeline. Uh, May nineteenth, which is our next one meeting, will be our official presentation to the board. Now, Mayor, myself, and, uh, funny to say the word, the mayor for town, uh, we may meet prior to that meeting to kind of discuss, follow, uh, less than both of the budget, but we'll officially present it on the nineteenth. Um, at that time, we may set the workshop for June second, but that's depending on the agenda for June second. Uh, we can start earlier if it's a pleasure of the board on June second for a special meeting, or we can change the June second meeting to the actual budget workshop. That's really a pleasure of the board. Um, if that goes according to plan for the second, then June sixteenth would be the official budget hearing where we could possibly adopt the budget. Uh, so I wanted to read those dates into, uh, the record. Um, I also had a correspondence about the splash pad. Typically, um, the splash pad, I think this is the second year it's open. Um, the lake ordinance, uh, opens the lake on Memorial Day weekend, and so Parks and Rec staff has basically been running the splash pad to open around that same time. I did check with Parks and Rec. They hadn't gotten a significant amount of calls from residents asking for it to be opened a few weeks earlier, but I did tell the mayor that I would at least, um, provide information on the timetables on when they do open. So, it does open every year, Memorial Day with the lake. And that does conclude, um, the manager's report. There's a conversation I'd like to chime in on about parking, but I would wait to, I'm gonna wait to the little tip of, uh, item to discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. For going to board's number of comments, we'll start with Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to add two things. Um, first, I want to thank the, uh, Pastor's Coalition here in Hope Mills and all the churches that were represented last Thursday at the National Day of Prayer. Thank our, uh, Parks and Rec staff and any other staff that, uh, went out and stood up for that. Again, it was, uh, well attended. Um, it was good, and, uh, truck, and trucks and stuff was my second. Um, that was, that was a great event. Once again, you know, our Parks and Rec and all the staff that worked, um, this past, uh, weekend for that event, um, feel like it was a huge success. So, thank all the employees for that. Thank all of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. I want to thank you and Commissioner Crager for attending National Day of Prayer while, uh, a few of us were in Greenville at, uh, at some, um, professional development sessions during the State of the National League, um, conference. So, I really appreciate you attending that, and what I understand was well attended. Uh, Commissioner Sroll?
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see so many happy faces. Yes, yes. Now you're smiling because I said that, but, uh, reverse psychology, see how it works? Um, it's good to see people here, though. Um, also, I attended the trucks and stuff. It was, uh, it was really, really great. I, I enjoyed it. I, I brought my daughter-in-law and tried to see if I can get her to sit on the tractor. She wasn't happy. Um, yeah, she was, she was a little overwhelmed, but, uh, everyone looked like they were having a really good time. Uh, the helicopter was there. That was really great, too. So, um, it looked really, really great. Um, again, I appreciate Parks and Rec also and the rest of the town staff that assisted in putting it on, because I know we had Public Works out there and a bunch of the other entities, Fire Department, Police Department, of course, so, um, it was really, really great. And also, I would like to make this, uh, just a note. There's been misunderstanding, but I did not recommend any type of name change for Ed Heron Park. There was never a mention of any type of name change, but for some reason, it's that rumor, lie, whatever you want to call it, is spreading like wildfire, so I want to clarify. I mean, that's why I even posted the, uh, the minutes from the meeting. I, I never even went to Ed Heron Park until the day after that meeting. So, I definitely did not recommend the name change, but just want to clarify. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Sroll. Commissioner Crager?
I don't have anything to say other than I did attend our National Day of Prayer, and it always does your heart good to bring the community together to pray as we did. And as you know, we all need prayer and, uh, ask all the ministers there to keep Hope Mills and the board and our citizens, uh, in their prayers every day. And it was well attended, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to gather.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Crager. Mayor for town, Dr. McRae?
Good afternoon, everyone. I just have, uh, two events that I want to share with you all. I've shared it before, but just a reminder, we are, the crime workers are still holding posting a, uh, mother-son daddy-doer dance on May twenty-fourth at six P M. It should be really nice. It's really affordable, so, um, we have the flyers up, uh, registrationally, so please register for that if you are interested. And on June seventh, we are hosting a gun violence awareness event. Um, it's gonna be a really nice event. It's, uh, it's an event, and then it turns into a walk. So, we'll be giving out gun locks. Um, we have victims of survivors, people that have had lost family members due to gun violence, and, uh, it has been hosted by the Zetas of Hope Mills, Federal Chapel Jack and Jails, the Town of Hope Mills. So, if you can attend that on nine A M. on June seventh, it's in honor of gun violence awareness, uh, day and month as well. Uh, we would love to have you, and that's gonna be hosted over at Parks and Rec. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor for town, Dr. McRae? Was it tough getting around Hope Mills Saturday? Yes. Well, you know what? There probably were probably about thirty thousand people in Hope Mills on Saturday because of various events that was going on. Every park in Hope Mills had some function and was crowded. They had trucks and stuff on the golf course. Our main park cable was full. The two new lots that we have down at the lake park, completely full of cars. Complete, what does that say? What does that say about us, our community? When you have that many people attending all of these events, and we've got a Parks and Rec department, and Marco, you and your team, were behind every one of this along with our police department, our fire department, and all of our town employees, were engaged in some way with one of the events that happened Saturday. The same thing happened Saturday before that at litter sweep and the shredding and the recycling event that we had. That was well, well attended as well. I know the, because the strip out there between McDonald's and Walgreens, well, it's nice and clean. I don't know how long it'll last, but Commissioner Sroll and I, we cleaned it and cut it, and the hill at Walgreens did. But it's not gonna stay that way long. I've noticed there's been more cans and trash come back to it, to the, what we call the strip. We had another big event that happened this weekend. We had one of our place, Artist Village, that opened up seven o'clock Friday night. Peter and Starke. It was in our Parks and Rec. Every show was maxed out, especially the three o'clock on Sunday, where they could have had a seven or a nine o'clock performance and still would have been full. And the takeaway from all of these events is a testament to the great things that we do in this town. I just wish that a lot of these great things were referenced on certain social media sites because they don't. I just wish they did, because we're really doing excellent community events in this town, and Saturday was one of them. So, I get a little passionate it's because I know that we're doing the right thing for this community. And you know what? I'm not the only one that knows that. There are a lot of people that live in this community that know the same thing, too. Some of us this past week went to get some education at the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual State Conference held at Greenville. And despite what some people write, that it was a waste of time, it is not a waste of time, not at all. I learned so much out of these sessions because I got to collaborate with other mayors and other municipalities. And they're doing some great things in the state of North Car- Carolina. We are the third largest growing state right now. We truly are. And it's really a good opportunity to go and learn from other people best practices and share what we're doing that's really great. And yes, there, we were brought up, Hope Mills was. How's the lake doing? I mean, just about in every conversation, that was brought up. And that's really, really good when other folks across the state want to bring that up. But it was the training sessions that probably meant the most. And you always go to professional development. I know I worked at the college along with Dr. McRae. And professional development, we all can learn more in every day, especially best practices. And we blame that back here, and we use it, especially now that we're looking and navigating through a budget that we're about to propose at our next May meeting, May sixteenth. So, you learn from other folks, so I just kind of wanted to share that. We have our Mayor's Coalition. That meeting is coming up Saturday morning. It's at Spring Lake this, this town. There's some key stuff that's on here, and we'll probably talk about it at our May sixteenth meeting. We've got a presentation from United Way on County Literacy Program. We have a presentation about the food assessment data plan, and then we've got a big one. It is a joint city-county emergency management presentation Friday morning at our Mayor's Coalition. There are nine municipalities, nine mayors, and we all will meet, and that's gonna be a pretty big, uh, presentation, and then followed by that is a rule act. So, that's some more education about what's happening not only in Hope Mills, what's happening around Cumberland County. All good things that I wish would find their way to certain social media sites. One thing, uh, I was presented, one thing, and I'll just read it off to the board. This came in from the county. Uh, Sadie Wilson from Engagement and Outreach Ma- Outreach Manager. I just read it. It says, "Good morning and Happy Friday." Well, today is Happy Monday. "As we approach the 2026 budget season, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners is excited to engage with residents and provide insight about how the annual budget process works. We would love to collaborate with you to host a Coffee with the Commissioners event for residents in and around Hope Mills." It's exciting. Right? I could stop right there, and, and that's exciting, because that's what we're doing. I've got Talk It Out Take Two coming up Thursday at six o'clock in the rec center, Engaging. We've got State of the Town coming up on the twentieth. If you can provide the space, we'll take care of the coffee. Maybe they'll take care of the food, too. Seems like that's an issue as well. We're wanting to hold the event in Hope Mills Town Hall. The meetup will run from eight A M. to nine A M., and we have listed the following open dates for you to choose from. Please let us know if any of these work for you. May seventh, May tenth, thirteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, twenty-one, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. Town leadership and elected officials are also more than welcome to attend this event. Thank you so much for your time. Please let us know if you have any questions. You can report partnering with this community initiative of community engagement. Collaboration and partnerships. That's the sea in the harbor that provides us all votes. It really, really does. This is another example. I don't know if we're gonna decide tonight by the board. I mean, Commissioner Laig's not here, so it's gonna be one of these dates, and, um, and, and Brian stepped out. So, we'll talk about it tonight, and, uh, we'll select one of these, and we'll make sure that we get it out of which one, which one of these days we'll pick. Of course, it's not gonna be May seventh. I don't, I think we can rule that one out. I think we can rule out maybe May tenth, so we're looking probably at next week. All right? That's all I got? A little bit. All right, next, under item A is presentations, swearing in of police officers. I would ask Police Chief Dolinger to meet me at out front and bring the officers up. And here's the rule. Officers that's getting promoted are sworn in or being sworn in tonight. If you have family here, you're more than welcome to come up front and take pictures. This is a family event. This is just not one person. In the Army, when we get, when we come into the Army or we get promoted, it's family. Well, you know what? If you work for the Town of Hope Mills, you're family. Right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, our first officer is gonna be Alicia Powell. Um, she has two children. She has a master's degree in special education. She has, uh, three years, what's that? Sorry, I had to remember children wrong, sorry. Um, two, two children, a master's degree in special education, three years in law enforcement. Um, and she comes to us from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. Um, we're gonna call them all up, but one shot, sir. Um, our next officer is Cody Sterick. Uh, he has one stepdaughter. Uh, he has two years in law enforcement, uh, on patrol, and he also came to us from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. Uh, the next officer is Jacqueline Cooper. He's married with three children, uh, twelve-year-old, twin girls. That, that's a lot of work. A ten-year-old little boy. Um, and he has four years in law enforcement, uh, in Red Springs. Uh, that's where he comes to us most recently, and then prior to that, nine months in Scottsdale County. And then our, uh, final officer for swearing in is Thomas Thompson. Um, he has three years in law enforcement, and he, uh, served previously with the Spring Lake Police Department and one year, uh, with Allied Company Police.
All right? Okay.
Chief, question, what, how many years have we had here? So, let's see.
How many years?
Say here. About thirteen years?
Thirteen, yes. And we welcome for thirteen years to our community. All right. So, you have, here's how it's gonna go. You want to say aye, and then, when I say this, state your name. Each of you will state your name. Then we'll go all the way through, and then when we get to state your position, when I get to that point, we'll state your position. Let's start. Left hand on the bottle, raise your right hand, because I only have one. But anyway, you gotta raise your right hand. No. Aye, say your name.
Cody Sterick?
Do you solemn swear?
I solemn swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal law.
To enforce the criminal law.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not.
That I will not.
Be influenced by any man. Like now.
Like now.
A five score present.
A five score present.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Laws.
And the laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Therewith.
Therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
With charge.
With charge.
To do.
To do.
As my.
As my.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a state of position.
Police officer. Police officer.
Police officer. For the Town of Hope Mills.
For the Town of Hope Mills.
Affordingly to the best.
Affordably to the best.
Of my skills.
Of my skills.
Ability.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations. There you go. All right. Big Chris, anybody wants to take pictures? Let me go. Before you guys return back to your seats, you gotta come over and sign these documents.
I actually live on the, but, uh, we're graduated. Nine, oh, nine, three. I do, I do know some people, though.
I go, I still go down there every Saturday.
Yeah? What side of the wagon are you from? I used to hang out on Sabbath and there and all of that, all that.
Our next officer is gonna be promotion to sergeant, and that's Detective Daryl Morgan, who's gonna be promoted to sergeant. Uh, he's married, uh, twenty-two years to his wife, Deanna. He has, uh, two children, Grayson and Ethan, fourteen and eleven. Uh, he worked as a paramedic and a, uh, general, and he's a general aviation instructor. He graduated B-Leg two thousand seventeen. He swore into the Hope Mills P D. in two thousand eighteen, and he spent the last two and a half years as a detective. He will be, uh, be, uh, assigned to our patrol unit.
You gonna bring your pen? I did. All right. All right, you're, you're in the right place. I'm just gonna read. I'm not going home after you walk. Certificate of Promotion. By order of the Chief of Police, Daryl Morgan is hereby promoted to the position of Sergeant. His fifth day of May twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Stephen Dolinger, Police Chief, and myself. Jake, you wanna go?
I'm a little bit.
Our next, um, and our final promotion for tonight is gonna be Captain Derwin Brayboy to the rank of Deputy Chief. Um, Captain Brayboy joined the Hope Mills Police Department in September of two thousand twenty-three after retiring from the North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement Division as, uh, Special Agent in Charge of the Fayetteville, um, District. He proudly served, uh, in that capacity for over thirty-one years. Um, while serving as, uh, captain of our, most recently of our uniformed division, Captain Brayboy is an active Army, uh, reserve, reservist, um, uh, with the rank of Colonel, currently, currently serving as the Command Inspector General. with the rank of Colonel, currently serving as the Command Inspector General of the AR MedCom in Pinellas Park, Florida. He has served over thirty-four years in both the North Carolina Army National Guard and the Army Reserves. He received his Baccus Agreement for justice from the University of North Carolina at Pembroke in nineteen ninety-three. Is a graduate of the Army's Command and General Staff College and West Point Leadership Program and many other leadership courses throughout his law enforcement career.
That's, that's an outstanding resume, isn't it? That is an outstanding military resume, if you hear that. He brings all that experience to our community. And he's going to serve us well in his new role of Deputy Chief. I've known Captain Brayboy since he was a little while, and I can tell you that dedication is him. He is dedicated to serving this community. Not only Hope Mills, he's dedicated to serving law enforcement wherever he is needed and wherever action is needed to be taken. Certificate of promotion by order of the Chief of Police, Derwin Brayboy is hereby promoted to the position of Deputy Chief. Present this fifth day of May twenty twenty-five. Signed by Stephen Dolger, Police Chief, and myself. Congratulations. Hey, is that it?
Yep.
Anybody else?
That's it.
Anybody else want to get promoted to the army? Next item is item B. Proclamation, recognizing National Police Week outfitting. Proclamation, National Police Week, May eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. National Police Week, Police Week twenty twenty-five is meant to honor the service sacrifice of all those police officers killed in line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the International Associations of Chiefs of Police have declared police officer safety and wellness a top priority. And the LACP Center for Officer Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual agency, family, community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas the members of the Police Department of the Town of Hope Mills play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by promoting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas the men and women of the Police Department of the Town of Hope Mills undoubtedly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jesse Belfars, call upon all citizens of the Town of Hope Mills and upon all patriotic civil educational organizations to observe the week of May eleventh and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observations in which our community may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for serving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Town of Hope Mills to observe May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled to perform as their duty proclaimed this fifth day of May twenty twenty-five. I don't know, who's got the next one? Okay. That's under, the next one is under item C, proclamation, recognizing Municipal Clerks Week twenty twenty-five. And that's under camp three.
Thank you, Mayor. So the fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May fourth to May tenth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is among the, is the oldest among public servants and is one of the few statutorily obligated positions any incorporated municipality must have. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Jesse Belfars, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do recognize the week of May fourth through May tenth as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent proclaimed this fifth day of May twenty twenty-five.
Actually, in veranda, we thank you for your dedication because you're the glue. You truly are. We wouldn't be able to read these proclamations. We wouldn't be able to go through this agenda packet. We wouldn't be able to do any function that we're doing right now if both of you were not here. All the time. All right. Who's got public service? Okay, public services, that's the next one. It's under item D, proclamation, recognizing Public Service Week twenty twenty-five. And it's under camp four.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be reading proclamation, recognizing Public Service Week twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills employs more than one hundred and seventy-nine civil servants who work diligently to provide exceptional service to our more than eighteen thousand residents. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills provides immense value to the town through their knowledge, dedication to their role and compassion for the community. And whereas town employees are bought up to so many of the aspects of daily life in Hope Mills, including fire and police protection, green space and recreation opportunities, waste services, planning and development, government connectivity and more. And whereas many public service jobs are physically hazardous or dangerous. And we extend our thanks to all employees who take risks in their daily lives to help our town run effectively. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills extends its sincere appreciation to all of our employees whose work continues to keep the operation of our town running smoothly. And now therefore, Jesse Belfars, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, hereby proclaims the week of Sunday, May fourth through Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty-five, Public Service Recognition Week in the Town of Hope Mills and encourages residents to show their appreciation and respect to the town of police who dedicate their careers to operating and improving our town. Proclaimed this fifth day of May twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Marley. And I would like to say thank you to all of our employees of this town who serve this community every day as the best. You guys bring the best that you can bring to serving eighteen, almost nineteen thousand residents that look forward to services every week. Those residents who were just what I was talking about on Saturday and are parts. That just didn't happen overnight. That happened with a lot of dedication to service. And it happens with a lot of dedication to community. And for every, every employee in our town, I know for a fact, because I've witnessed it, that they come to work every day dedicated to get the best they can to this community because they believe in this community, as we do. Next item. Public comments. We have two speakers tonight. All right, each speaker is required to state their name and address and limit comments to only three minutes. And the total comment period is going to be thirty minutes or less. Speakers should avoid repetition and group should designate spokespersons. So this should have signed up with the town clerk or police officer. Must speak prior to the start of the meeting. Please direct comments to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers may not explain board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Sally, you're up first.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Hope you all had a good day, all right? Okay, I'm Sally Bailey, five eight, bus seven, Honey Bridge Road, Hope Mills. Have two topics. First, landscaping, okay? They cleaned up the parking lots, the path, Mr. T. Looks good, okay? It's going to be exciting. We're going to pave and it's going to be great. But we've not finished. The fence that's right there between the trees is falling back on. I really think it would look great to replace them when they finish trimming up all the wood and step around the trees and stuff. That's probably maybe what they're waiting for is to replace that fence. I think it will look really nice down there, okay? Now second, okay, I'm sitting on my deck, Sunday, we could go. All right, it's getting five o'clock, something like that. I'll send you a shot. Then I hear a bullet whizz by my head, okay? All right, it hits my neighbor, either the tree in her yard or the fence. Then another shot. Then a second, two more shots. Called the Hope Mills Police, they came out. I did not hit the police officer. I'm pretty sure he went and talked to some of the other, maybe neighbors that were around in that area. This is not the first time. This is the second time I have been sitting on my deck and I have had a bullet come by me. And if you don't think I don't know what a bullet is, I wish you could talk my dad. Okay, he had called me, oh, I was shooting, take care of one. Oh, yeah, third time, I was riding horses, I got shot at, okay? That was definitely an accident. But anyway, let's talk about the fact that this goes on in our neighborhood. I feel sure it goes on all the neighborhoods in Hope Mills. This is getting a little bit close to home, okay? They're shooting somewhere, all right? We need to find out where, who it is, and have them arrested, okay? I would love to see, now manager, police department get together. Let's have meet with the police officer. Let's talk about where we think this has come in from. Let's have an open meeting with nothing but the citizens out of these communities. Either that or we get the police department to go into these communities and knock on doors. What have you heard? What have you seen before someone gets killed? And I really would prefer that person not to be there, okay? But seriously, it can happen. We see it happening. Fayette, in Raleigh, Fayetteville is all around us. We need to work on it. Summer's coming up. We've got some kids hanging down the street from us. They're kids. I can't blame the kids. They're out at eleven o'clock at night. Where's the parents? You know, that's the problem with the parents. So let's see if we can't start doing this and start, we're going, I mean, summer's coming and it's going to get bad. So let's start walking on this stuff, this stuff. I appreciate it all. Y'all have a good weekend.
Sally, before you go, what, what, two things. Well, first one, I'll get it. Where's the fence you're talking about?
Okay, um, Mr. T's?
Yeah.
Okay, you've got the parking lot here with the old house, lot that car.
Yeah.
Parking lot, huh? Okay, that fence is right between those trees.
Ah, okay, that's where.
It's going to look really good when they get it cleaned out, but police are still there. And I'm pretty sure that's probably maybe what they're waiting for is that fence replaced.
Okay, we can follow that up and get an answer at our next meeting. The fence. Second issue, gun balance. As we just went through with the dogwood down in the city. Gun balance has, it's just taking a new direction. It's, it's just not in one community. It's in any community. It's in any given day, in any given neighborhood, in any given town. How do we address gun balance? How do we stop it?
That's a good question because, um, I can't remember the names, guy, the names of anyone who bopped the lot in front of Honey Bridge Road and discussed departments there. Okay, there was some trailers out there. And they moved the trailers out. That was Southern County. That was not Hope Mills, but it's in Hope Mills through extension. So anyway, we had a lot of shooting at that time. And the police sheriff department went over there, talked to this one specific guy, and I think persuaded him to see it their way, that that was not a good idea. So some of it slowed down and then when those trailers moved out, it stopped. And then it started again a couple of years ago. And the police have been there. We even had two drug dealers that were shooting at each other on Honey Bridge Road. About how you pull out a rockfish, go on the Honey Bridge Road. They were there, the police were there. They were putting the little things down, counting the bullets, picking them up and everything else. They went around and picked the homes to see if the shots went to the houses. Now that's scary. You know, we live in Hope Mills, it shouldn't happen here. But this is getting ridiculous that it's got to be the same kids, the same adults playing with the guns. And why do they think it's so wonderful to shoot through the neighborhood? They haven't figured out what the rest of us know. That bullet comes out, it's back there down somewhere.
It does.
I mean, feet and leg up, all right?
Mr. Swallow?
I feel your pain because I don't know if, October, it was Halloween, three o'clock in the morning, my house got shot. And I didn't realize it until later that evening when I had to call the, the police department to come cut my wall and get the bullet out. They found the nine millimeter round embedded in my office wall where if I was playing video games, I would have gotten shot in my house. So I, I, I completely understand. Yeah, it's something scary. And, and that's the thing that's crazy is it was, we're, we're assuming it's a kid. They, they couldn't arrest the person because, make a long story short, the woman who they were bothering wouldn't give up the person's name. So it's like, I had to pay insurance money to get my house fixed and, you know, all that fun stuff. But it, it is certainly scary, especially when you're, you know, like I was asleep when this shooting started. So you never know. But that's something I think we will follow up on definitely because I've heard a lot of complaints, especially on Nextdoor, where people are constantly concerned because there is, they're allowed to shoot in a county and there's land that is counting with our donut hole very close by. And so it's getting into the town limits with the gunfire. We'll try to come up with some kind of solution, something if we have to do, I don't know. I'll leave that to the police department, but we're going to have to come up with something.
We always seem to think it's the kids, okay? Not necessarily. I, you know, in my neighborhood, it's been done with adults, okay?
Yeah, because they think they have.
They definitely.
Yeah. They, they can know better and just shoot them up then, not noticing where it's going, yeah. The trouble is real.
But I'm sure that if we, when the police chief, police department, town manager, I feel sure that we can address this problem, okay? Are we going to solve it? But if we can please nip it in the bud, it's foreign fed, you know, maybe, maybe speak with them once that the police department will come at you and they will pursue you as soon as they can come out and walk.
Would you, do you want a police officer to follow up with you?
No, it's too early.
No.
No.
But he came around, I saw him. We just didn't stop by my house, it's fine. But then he could have get some neighbor standing right there and talk to me. Especially if they were, you know, you send something, you know, I'm pretty sure they'd talk with that one.
Sally, I can tell you that one of the hallmark programs of our police department from Chief Dolinger and Deputy Chief Brayboy is, is all about community police. Because I mean, they're actively engaged in the community in different events. But there's a, we also had an event coming in seventh, right? About gun violence and awareness, about awareness.
We can't talk enough about, I mean, you pick up a paper with it in the newspaper. Little kid, was it Rodney? Nine years old was the kid? Probably drive by, shooting. I mean, this happens all, this is unreal, you know?
We thank you, Sally.
Thank you, I would thank you.
Ron? You're next.
Before you even start that clock, let me know the building. Dog force. Ron, City Act forty-three sixty-four, Dominique Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina, two eight three four eight. Animal control ordinance. Alright, the county adopted, Cumberland County approved a new animal control ordinance of June seventh, twenty twenty-one. The town of Hope Mills subsequently adopted the county's ordinance of twenty twenty-one. Uh, board members at the time of adoption, uh, Mayor Bellflower, Jerry Lake, Brian Marley, McCray, I can't pronounce his first name.
Kenon.
Kenon. And, uh, Joanne was elected in twenty twenty-one in November, so I don't know if she was part of that whole deal. Uh, lack of local review, there's no record of the board insulting the town animal control officer or other subject matter experts prior to the adoption. Community feedback, no public hearing, no, no public hearings appear to have been held, gauge citizen concerns, or highlight practical impacts on local households. Follow-up, I came up here and questioned, uh, the board in, um, twenty twenty-four. And when questioned, the town manager and the current mayor and the board told me that, uh, there was no local amendments were possible directing me, they said citizens, back to the county board. That ain't not happening, that's your house, y'all. The ordinance currently allows unlimited dogs and cats per household. In dense residential areas, lot sizes make proper caring challenging. It does. Potential for unregulated breeding operations, puppy mills, I'm watching it right now, happen. I'm watching a puppy milk right now. Risk of unvaccinated animals creating public health hazards. I also have a dependent in my household. I can't ever scratch, I can't ever bit, can't none of that. Dogs are running loose, nobody will do anything about it. Uh, town website, uh, Hope Mills town website. List animal control under the main directory, nine one zero four five four one zero three. The direct callers to Cumberland County, Cumberland County, nine one zero six seven seven five five four five. The county prefers residents back to the town staff, leading to unresolved inquiries. Hope Mills prefers me back to Cumberland County. There's an absence of clear, dedicated point, uh, dedicated point of contact. It frustrates enforcement and it frustrates the heck out of me. Uh, several neighboring municipalities, cat, pet ownership, had three dogs and three cats. We are allowed one million dogs. You can have as many dogs, as many cats as you want in this town. We should put that on our billboard and draw on more people. That's our cap. Uh, clear and local amendments streamline enforcement, protect both animals and community well-being. Can't stress that enough. I, I recommend adopting ordinance, capping the number of dogs and cats per household, three dogs, three cats. It should be a public hearing, schedule a, a, a community meeting to solicit feedback from residents, breeders, veterinary advantage, and the town's subject matter expert, the animal control officer. Gotta talk to this guy. Um, you need to establish a single local animal control phone line. Gotta do it. If I'm calling, I had to call nine one one, I know I'm on my time, but this just happened to me. I had to call nine one one, April nineteenth, with a rottweiler that had jumped my fence. There nobody lived behind me. Got my yard, I was charged by them. Two French Bulldogs trying to get in my house. It took three hours for Cumberland County Animal Control to get out there. Nothing happened. Nothing happened. Now blame me, well, not blame me. Responsibility is on you guys to fix this problem, not me. So with that being said, I hope you really look at this policy. If these twenty dogs were living next to anybody, anybody in this room, anybody, you'd be up here doing the same thing. It's not just me, it's my neighbors. My neighbors aren't, aren't gonna stand up, I know it. So I'm doing it. I'm out of doing it. There's another person also in Hope Mills, not in my neighborhood, dealing with a person with ten dogs. This is gonna be two to grow, 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 grow. So that's all I got to say. Have a good time and I'll see you.
Ron, before you go.
Yeah. Oh, one other thing.
Yeah.
Did we pay the landscaper, uh, two-thirds of the thirteen hundred dollars? Or are we paying the whole thirteen hundred dollars for the minority part of this?
Question for town manager.
I thought we'll buy some ways to have it sit out between them. But you did a great job. Props off. You did a great job in this last one.
We have been building it, so.
Huh?
We have been building it, so I, I don't think he's ready for us to do Q and A, you say.
Okay. Ron? Earlier, I read this memo that came from the county.
Yeah.
Cofferwood, the commissioner.
Yeah.
Now, would you be available between eight and nine on one of these dates? I have Cofferwood, Cumberland County Commissioners, and share their thoughts and recommendations about the animal control ordinance which belongs to them.
Well, we can make it, this town, we're willing to.
Okay, okay, well, I'm, we're gonna pick one of these dates.
Okay.
I'll make sure that you are informed.
Alright.
And, um, yeah, because this is a form of engagement with county commissioners. And we'll be here too.
I hope so.
Yeah.
But I hope, I can't stress it enough, I hope they make an ordinance that caps this.
Okay, put a cap on it. But it's time to discuss it and I think maybe this is an excellent, Mr. Swol?
I, um, question about, so the ordinance, what, wasn't the issue that if we change the ordinance, then we have to get our own animal control?
That's something I haven't very clearly explained. We could adopt a new ordinance. I'm only about five more.
Then we're gonna have to hire. Because the Cumberland County won't.
Because this is a service that the county is providing to us. It is their ordinance, and that's basically what happened when we adopted their ordinance. We could vary, our ordinance was stronger. If you want us to re-adopt our ordinance, give me a whole force for animal control.
So, no, that's why I'm.
Ron, let's start with the conversation with Cofferwood. Let's start, let's start with that and see where it goes.
But the tens of thousands of dollars that I've paid over my lifetime paying, living in this town, living here, tens of thousands of dollars, I've been here thirty-six years. And you're telling me that I gotta deal with twenty, fifty, sixty, seventy dogs for the next year? Is that what you're telling me? That we don't have the will to do something? Is that what I'm hearing?
We, he's saying we can do it if we want to use the tax money to hire our.
Public safety, let's do it.
To, to take care of our own animal control issues. That's what has to happen if we do that.
Down with that.
And that's, this is the good feedback because you said you don't have a problem with it. And I agree, I don't think anyone would have a problem because if we change the ordinance, it'll make everyone happy. I hope everyone else agrees with you or me or her that if we hire animal control and change the ordinance, but the struggle is real and, you know, it's, it's, it's a losing battle, but.
I'll be there, just let it know. I'll go, I'll let you know. Appreciate it.
Okay, that's all that's signed up for public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There's four items under the consent agenda, item A, B, C, and D. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve items A, B, C, and D under consent.
I have a second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries, consent agenda is approved. At the end of the consent agenda, we go to item six, that's old business. We say our favorite word, none, again. This is good. Then we go to new business, which is the discussion on proposed parking plans for Heritage Park and Lake Park. There are no attachments, which would just be enough of a discussion about where do we go from here and Chancellor can add that.
So I want you guys to bear with me, um, this is not too lengthy, but it's something I think that I'd like to share. Fifteen years ago, before many of our current staff joined the town of Hope Mills, Heritage Park was only a dream, an idea born from a study by N C State. It had no full design, no estimated cost, and no groundwork laid at the time. Today, that dream is a vibrant reality. We've created one of the most unique spaces in the region, one that enhances our park system and enriches the quality of life for our residents. It's attracting attention, admiration, and it stands as a testament to what's possible when vision meets perseverance. The Parks and Recreation Director, Lamarko Morrison, took the challenge of bringing this dream to life. He and his team went to great lengths to involve others in the process. They reached out, they invited participation, and asked for historical narratives and images to shake the groundbreaking ceremony. Fortunately, some individuals declined to engage, but our team pushed forward. Phases one and two of the park's design included thoughtful elements, an outdoor classroom, an event lawn, restroom, trails, a kayak and canoe launch, a picnic shelter, inclusive playgrounds, creekside areas for bank fishing, and planned parking with an expansion built in the phase two under current design. When it came time to develop the park's storyboards, the Parks and Recreation staff again extended invitations to colla, for collaboration, especially to ensure historical accuracy. Again, those invitations were declined, and again, our staff pressed on with assistance of members from the Historic Preservation Commission. During the final phase, Citizen Charles Gardner reached out with a generous offer. The historic Gris Mill artifact he had long preserved with only one request, that we honor his late wife. We proudly accepted and honored his contribution. The result is a uniquely beautiful park, one of the finest our town has seen. As for parking, a challenge that's long existed in the area, we always worked creatively to manage it. Historically, parking has been done by committee with shared use of the First Citizens Bank Lot, which we own, and limited spaces at Hope Mills Lake. I will add that we did actually go out and give a count. There's, um, about seventeen more parking spaces at the lake than you have at Heritage Park. So both sites actually have somewhat limited parking. But still, we've hosted incredible events here for years. When we revised Christmas at the lake, we didn't cancel it due to parking issues. We analyzed, adapted, and invested. We purchased property at Fountain Lane to expand parking, a project now in current design. Now, with rising demand for Heritage Park and concerns about parking, the question remains, will we build a solution or will we build a barrier? My recommendation is clear, let's build a solution. I propose a shuttle service townwide during large special events, like the Fourth of July, like Christmas at the lake, and other major time events. This system will connect key sites across Hope Mills, all owned by the town of Hope Mills, and all with available parking. The golf you greenway site, the municipal complex here, the lake, First Citizens Bank, the chapel, and Heritage Park. I think that this approach would greatly improve access, ease congestion, and ensure residents can still fully enjoy our events. To implement this, we would need to purchase two additional vans dedicated solely to special event transportation. But I think a townwide shuttle service for all of our large events would provide a realistic solution to parking challenges. In closing, I would like for us to choose progress and to keep building towards the future our community deserves. So we have two choices, a solution or a barrier. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Comments from the board? Mr. Swol?
Do we need, uh, volunteers or how is the shuttle service going to go?
Um, I want to commend, um, Parks and Recreation Lamarko because the idea came twofold. Uh, two weeks ago, we had a cookout at Heritage Park. At some point, I looked up and I asked him, where are all these people coming from? And I didn't realize him and his staff sprung together pretty spontaneously and just created a shuttle service. They went and made an announcement here at, at the Parks and Rec building and at the lake, and they just launched shuttling people. And so this would be more deliberate, but I think we could probably get it through with just regular staff. Because it only would happen at big events. This is not an everyday thing. The second thing happened, and this is why I keep preaching upon these conferences. We're on one of the shuttles to E C U. And I said to myself, we're not driving. It's a full organized shuttle. We knew exactly what time they were picking up. We knew the schedule. If you missed the bus, someone was out there to tell you, hey, there's another one coming back in thirty minutes. This would just simply be a small-scale version. Um, we are making the pedestrian connections when this Rockfish Road project, golf view project, uh, is completed. You will have made an official connection from Hope Mills complex to the lake. We're talking about greenways possibly to connect, uh, to the golf course. So the idea is by committee and with a multi-layered approach, you, you address this issue through pedestrian connectivity. You're making it safer to walk in Hope Mills, and you do it by committee with the additional and existing parking we have and we own in the surrounding area. I do think it's something that works.
I think the only thing I could see is, and we saw it at the, uh, the East Urban, was even when we had the shuttle, people choose to walk. And they're done, and unless we yell at them and tell them, get off the road or something like that, and, you know, until we get crosswalks in and stuff like that, that, they're, they're crossing at their own risk and.
I will say that that's something I talked to, uh, Mr. Morrison and Mr. Sisco about just today. Um, with the concern, and we actually talked about this in phase one, we were just in the middle of construction of phase one. But when you're coming down Lakewood, we do need to put traffic common techniques coming off of Legion Road to slow down traffic in there. Um, yeah, Lakewood, oh, Lakeview, but, um, and so I do think you police Thompson Circle just outright. And so there's no parking there. You don't ever allow parking there. But I do think with traffic common techniques, um, that's what I talked to with Mr. Morrison about, but what I talked to Mr. Sisco about was we do have, uh, a grant for the crosswalk enhancements at Fountain Lane and, uh, Trade Street, the mid-block crossing, and the sidewalk across the street. We do have a funding gap that we need to talk to FAMCO about, but that's the pedestrian connectivity. So you do the shuttle service to address limited parking. You increase sidewalks to, to increase pedestrian connectivity and safer ways to actually travel. But we don't have a four-story parking deck here. We don't have a huge parking lot by the lake. But I do think we have the ability to continue to provide events that our citizens can enjoy in a way that makes it so that, you know, we can still provide for them, uh, with, with a reduced amount of parking.
I, I, I like the solution. We have been working to make our community more walkable. What I don't want us to do is spend millions of dollars on the park that people can't use. Uh, the park belongs to all of us, all of us taxpayers. It does not belong to groups of people that dictate what goes on there. So I would like for the park to be utilized. I'm glad that it's being utilized. Um, I'm glad that we're doing something about the parking, but if, if what you don't want to do is spend millions of dollars on a park that people do not use.
I agree, I agree. And you know why? Because that creates a barrier. And that's not the vision of Heritage Park, not at all. You know the old saying, you build it, they will come. Well, we built it. A lot of folks that, that go to Heritage Park, you know what they tell me? They see something happening in that park and it interests them. Because that park has never been open until now. It's always been the lake park. Well, now, now there's another park. It's secluded. Its vision was for small events, family oriented. But there's been a parking issue. We realized that during these past two events, that parking became an issue. We wanted to showcase, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna say this, yeah, I am, because I'm, I'm a little passionate about what some people say that's. We wanted to showcase Heritage Park. We're proud of it. We wanted to do that during the state of the town dress. We really did. Because we're proud of the park. And we also realized that there are parking issues and concerns that we need to work out. So we changed the, the location, the venue. We didn't do that because of a group of people. We did it out of, out of the abundance. We didn't do that because of a group of people. We did it out of, out of the abundance of safety concerns. Because we still got to address the safety concerns of the hill, what I call the hill, and Thompson Circle. On one side, we've got no parking signs on the lake side. We probably need to put no parking signs all the way around that property to ensure that no one parks on that, on that other side of the hill. But still, that only regulates some parking for Heritage Park itself. The shuttle system will work, and we know this because we learned about this at City View Conference in Greenville last week. Mayor of Concord and Commissioner Swoll was in the same, same session out with them. They had the same issues about parking and how they solved them. But you know how they did it through collaboration, through partnership, and they did it through having, being part of the solution instead of building a barrier. Like some folks like to continue to do. This past Saturday, the lake park was completely full. As I, I said that earlier. Those two lots that we bought completely full of cars. So that's telling us we've got a parking situation with our parks. If you were at the golf course on Saturday, that was full too. Completely full of cars. So we gotta, we gotta do something. We gotta address parking. And but we also have to address the safety concerns as well. And that's why we tapped the brakes. And we said, look, we're gonna move the state of the town to the fire department bays until we figure it out. And we will figure it out. But not one of us will do it. We're gonna do it collectively with the residents because as Mayor Prue Ken Dr. Ken Wanda said, that all of our parks belong to every resident in Hope Mills. Don't belong to one person or a group of people that wanna dictate sometimes what these parks are used for. Our main park here was just as crowded. Just as crowded of people. We're talking about kids. We're talking about families. We also talked about something Sally Betty brought up earlier, that if we don't, if we don't provide some recreational opportunities for our residents, what if our, what if our kids gonna continue to do or may do? But our parks are for kids. They're for middle-aged, older, young. There's no sign out there that says eighteen and under or sixty-five and over. There's no sign out there on our parks that say any of that. So the session I attended along with the Commissioner Swoll, it was really a, a moving session about the transformation of Concord by the town manager and by the mayor. And the conflicts that they heard kinda mirrored a lot of the conflicts and issues that goes, that goes on right here in this community. It was amazing. I have their numbers and I corresponded with them. That's how you get things done.
Mayor, I think that, that's one of the key points too. When you're at these conferences, you build relationships knowing that, wait a minute, it's not just us. We have other municipalities that are, they're facing these same issues, but you find a little muggy in how they solve their issue. Um, I'll piggyback on this past Saturday. Um, I was at one of the events that they set up. We had three events at the rec center at the same time. And I'm talking from ten in the morning till about eight that evening. You had trucks and stuff at the golf course. I don't know what was going on out here, but the buzz of people at the park, the lake, I, there was a buzz in this town I have never seen. And I'm talking throughout the entire town. But what hit me was every single one of these events was geared towards families. All of them. I had my eight-year-old with me the entire time. Every single one of these events simultaneously were all events that was geared towards families and kids. That's the identity that I want us to continue to be of for this town. This is a, a, a place for you to be able to enjoy quality life, you to be able to go with your family and your friends. Wasn't an issue at all. I don't think the parking is an issue, it's a challenge, something that we can actually rise to meet. I don't look at it as something that we can't, because I do think it's something that we can achieve, but we do it together and we do it in a way that preserves what I saw this very sadly.
It is, it is a challenge because if we, if we engage this in the direction of a barrier, that brand-new park will sit down or empty. And that is not what we invested the money in this community to do. Not at all. Not at all. So we're gonna figure it out. We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it collectively. One of them, I'm hoping that folks maybe have an answer on Thursday during the Talk It Out Take Two at six o'clock over in the rec center. We'll come to this solution together. And, and not, and like you said, Chancellor, it is a challenge, but we're not gonna make it a barrier. We're gonna solve it. We're gonna fix it. Anything else about parking plan from the board?
I got some, yes, sir. Um. I mean, could I, I mean, when, when I need to get like a consensus on the board or if I need to put it in a motion, I, I'll do that too, but to, uh, authorize the town manager to, uh, look at what all we do need to, to be able to offer some type of shuttle service for large events or reach out, uh, maybe do a contract with some local companies that provide transportation services to come in for large events and provide that service for the town. What, what would you need or what would we need to do there?
Ironically.
Forward, we're trying to get a.
You know, Commissioner Marley, it's interesting you say that because the mayor of Concord had the same idea too. And they, and he talks about the very same thing about shuttle services and, and about, you know, how, how to move people around. So.
So I mean, if, if, if we need a consensus from the board to allow the manager to, to move forwards with, uh, trying to bring a stack something or, or offset it in the form of a motion, whatever it is.
I, I think at this point, since there's, there were concrete actions being taken, I think a consensus to allow you to explore the options and bring the board some information with these.
I'm sorry, shit.
Well, I'll ask. I'll ask the rest of the board, go on, when you give the manager, okay, to move forward, try to balance the solution.
Is everybody good with allowing Chancellor to look at and explore some opportunities? How do we address the parking? Okay? Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I know there's a couple of military experts and, uh, Chief Brayboy may have an answer. Uh, the military, I, don't they give C D Ls for soldiers who drive buses? We can always set up for brand new.
Lamarco and I have talked, uh, so we have something next for me. Um, some, maybe three options, four proposals or something like that. Um, some type of service that we engage. Maybe something that we acquire or something to that magnitude. We'll look definitely, I'll do a deep dive into that. But I do think the shuttle service in some shape or form is the solution to this issue.
Good, Chancellor?
To add to that, if, here, here's how my, my mind is working. If you get soldiers to do it and they volunteer their time, put them in for the volunteer service. Something like that. So give them an incentive to do something and help the town, but you have to do that for the search.
Yeah. Okay. Just, just as a reminder, our next meeting will be the, uh, town operating budget proposal. So whatever action that the town manager will be looking at will have to be included in that town budget. That's good. Okay, that's gonna be May sixteenth. Okay, anything else? Alright. Item eight is just a reminder, some information items. Uh, May sixth, Prime Movers Zoom at six. Thursday is the Let's Talk It Out about our Parks Recreation Program Infrastructure Needs over in the rec center, starting at six, take two. That I call it. Friday, May ninth, I have talked about Mayor's Coalition at Spring Lake. Monday is, um, May twelfth, Prime Movers Parks and Rec Building at six. And I'm going over all these committees because they're, they're open to all, every resident in town. They're not just there for committee members. They're open to any residents who would like to come and participate. The Homelessness Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Building at six, and that's on May thirteenth. Wednesday, May fourteenth, is our Historic Preservation, Preservation Commission, Parks and Rec Building at six. Then we're back. May nineteenth, Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting at seven. Tuesday is the State of the Town Address, and that's at six over in the Fire Department Bays. And then also on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, there is a joint meeting between the Appearance Commission and Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and that's at six thirty. I think I got them right. Did I, actually, did I get them all right?
Okay.
See? Municipal clerk. I'm telling you. You got me. Make sure that I'm on the right track. Alright, staff concerns?
Um, so just very quickly, two things, as you've noted, um, and the reminder is all of the committee meetings are gonna be held in the Parks and Rec Building this month. So that goes for all of the committees, um, except for the Prime Movers Zoom meeting tomorrow. All the other meetings will be in the Parks and Rec Building this month. And then also, I know you said that you, um, may discuss that email from the county, um, later, but they just emailed me again before this meeting and they're pretty eager to get a response as soon as possible.
Well, we'll look at it after we adjourn.
Okay.
Anything else from staff? No? I'm gonna go on this wall. I'm gonna go in the very back. I don't see any up and downs. I don't see any waving. Is there waves back there? Okay. That's it? We have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? We are adjourned. Alright.